Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. If you'll bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come to you today to give you honor and praise. We thank you for our great country and we ask your divine wisdom for all of our leaders here today. May we be given the wisdom and courage in the decisions that we make. We ask that you guide and direct our meeting so that it's full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. We thank you for the accomplishments of reaching our goals and we pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Supervisors may, by motion, recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the Board's attorney on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to Arizona Revised Statutes 38-431.03, portions A3 and 4. Need a motion and action to call for an executive session to be held on September 18th, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. for the discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with Arizona Revised Statutes 38-431.03, portions A3 and 4, to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk.
One second.
We have a motion, second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Mr. Esplin, discussion of pending litigation?
Nothing to report.
Comittee or Legislative Report, Supervisor Angus?
None this morning, thank you.
Supervisor Johnson?
None this morning, Mr. Chair.
Rare day today. Supervisor Bishop?
None today, thank you.
I have a brief report. I attended the Symposium for Wild Horses and Burrows in Salt Lake City last week. It was very educational and the intent there is to save the wild horse and burrows. There currently is 140,000 animals that are in excess of the herd management areas and it's certainly a situation that's gotten out of hand and we're looking for solutions for healthy herds in healthy environments. And if you'd like more information, I'd be glad to converse with you.
Item number three, approval of the July 28th, 2017 Board of Supervisors' special meeting minutes?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On to item number four, the discussion, possible action for the appointment of District Five Supervisor to fill the vacant seat effective immediately after recordedation of oath of office until a person is elected at the next regular general election. At this point, our county attorney, Matt Smith, would like to make a few comments. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir. Thank you, Chairman Watson, Board of Supervisors, our Clerk of the Board, Attorney Esplin, County Administrator, Mr. Hendricks. The reason that I asked for just a minute or two to speak to you today is just to help with any procedural issues that might come up. Specifically, I asked my legal staff, including Attorney Esplin, Attorney Taylor, and James Schottman, as well as myself, to research the issue as to, under what circumstances are Clerk of the Board votes. Under ARS Section 11-213B, the statute states that when a vacancy occurs in the office of Supervisor, the remaining Supervisors, together with the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, shall fill the vacancy by appointment of a resident of the district in which the vacancy occurred. Therefore, I think the reasonable interpretation of that statute is, is that our clerk, Ginny Anderson, votes every single time that a candidate is nominated. The reason I'm bringing that up and I researched it is that I think there was a time in the past, and it might have been when we lost Supervisor Brotherton, when people thought, or maybe the public thought, that our clerk was there just to break a deadlock or break a tie. But that's not what the statute says. It says "together with." So I think that giving it the reasonable interpretation, which is how we review and analyze and interpret statutes, she ends up, Ginny Anderson, votes every single time. The Arizona Supreme Court in State versus Khalil affirmed the constitutionality of the statute and this statute at one time had the county recorder as being the person that broke the tie or was the fifth vote, but they switched it to an appointed person and since our clerk is not an elected official, the Arizona Supreme Court actually held that case, State versus Khalil, years ago and they affirmed the constitutionality of the statute, allowing the Clerk of the Board to be the one to vote and help elect this person. The only other comment I had is, is that obviously we have a quorum here today and I believe the magic number is, as everybody knows, three. So you need three people to vote in favor of any of the candidates today and once you nominate someone that gets seconded and there's three votes for that person, they end up being the Supervisor. Additionally, it does have to come from Supervisor Moss's district, according to the statute I just read. And I would be happy to answer any other questions, hopefully none difficult that you might have at this time.
Questions?
I have one question. So the Clerk of the Board votes, but just to reiterate, she can't make any motion or second, she can't second the nomination?
There is no law or case law specifically addresses that, but I think that would probably be a reasonable way to proceed because she is not an elected Supervisor. She is appointed and I don't mean to talk about you like you're not here, Ginny. You're already in a tough enough spot today and I appreciate that and I would not want to be in your shoes, by the way. However, since ordinarily, under the rules of order, the board members are the ones that nominate in second, I believe that that would be the correct way to proceed at this time. So I think it would be up to the four remaining board members to make nominations in seconds, but then when you vote, the clerk then would vote along with everyone else.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson?
Seems as a deviation from how we've done it in the past, was Ms. Anderson informed of this prior to this meeting?
I have no idea. She wasn't informed by me and I don't think anyone else in my office probably did that.
Got to put somebody in a tough spot coming up today and tell them before the meeting because I don't think they were included in a lot of things that went on prior to this. That's all I had. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Chairman Watson, if I can just interject, we did have one brief discussion, Ms. Anderson and I, and I informed her about some, answered some general questions, but we also explained that we would have Matt Smith today to address the Board so that they understood that. So I did answer some general questions from Ms. Anderson about the procedures and things, but we wanted to make sure that the county attorney, Matt Smith, would answer everything here today, so that everybody's aware.
All right. So specifically, was she told that she would be voting today?
Well, we talked about that and I explained that she would vote. It would be a vote and I reviewed the statute with her and that she would vote, not just be the tiebreaker, similar to what you discussed today. So to answer your question, yes.
All right. And was Ms. Anderson present during the interviews of the candidates?
Yes, she was.
Okay. One more question?
Certainly.
So when we call for the vote, do we do it by a roll call and does the clerk do it? Does she vote last? How does that work?
I think that is uncharted territory and I think it's really up to the Board. I believe that, I think the best procedure, if you're asking my opinion, which I don't think is really that relevant, but I think I would have a roll call every single time. Just because I know that there were, I think, eight candidates and, you know, I doubt that everybody's all thinking right now we're all voting for the same person, so I think that you'd want to have a roll call and that our clerk would still be the one to call it, but who votes and what order, I think, is completely up to the Board. Any other questions?
No, I guess, I just wish we'd had this added time because I think we're putting the clerk in a tougher position than it needs to be, but is it possible that the opinion that you're giving us, can we still go to the, just having Ms. Anderson break a tie instead of, is that up to the Board?
Well, I think that the way the statute reads, my interpretation of it and the rest of the legal opinions we have is, since it says that "along with the clerk shall decide," I believe that she would have the right to vote.
Then she ought to have the right to make a motion, too, and a second. Can't just give her part of the rights, can we?
Those are all good questions and I've tried to think about as many different possibilities, you know. I think there are other questions that would also be difficult to answer. I think that, for example, if, let's say, one of the board members abstained and you had a 2-1-1 vote, even with the clerk voting at that time, I believe that that would not be sufficient. I think you need three votes. But I would say if the Board decided and you discussed it, maybe somebody made a motion for discussion, if you wanted to make a motion that the clerk should be allowed to nominate somebody or have the option to do that, there isn't anything procedurally that I can think of that would say that she couldn't, but ordinarily, she's not in that position. So unfortunately, the statutes and the way our legislators draft statutes and what our courts decide don't answer every question that we have. So, fair question, I really, I can't answer it any better than that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van.
Thank you.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of the candidates. We've got a field of the most fantastic candidates that I think I've ever witnessed for filling a position on this level and I'd like to thank each and every one of you. It takes a lot of time to get prepared for these. Sometimes it's very emotional, it can be very intimidating, and I just want to take this moment to thank you, each and every one of you. And at this time, I'd like to give each one of you three minutes to make closing comments and/or recommendations and if you feel like you don't want the whole three minutes, don't feel obligated to stand up there for three. But I see on the very first row here, Mr. Zaborski, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Thank you, Chairman Watson and Supervisors Johnson, Bishop Angus, and Clerk of the Board, Anderson, for giving me this opportunity to talk one more time. I know that we did have that opportunity last week to talk about our background and answer some questions that you had. For those in the audience that don't know me, my name is Jim Zaborski and I live at 2111 Sandtrap in Fort Mojave. I was previously a Mojave County Supervisor in '97, '98, '99, and 2000. Prior to that, I was a city councilman for the city of Bullhead. Since that time, I've been 19 years on the Mojave County Airport Authority, also on the Board of Directors of the Bullhead City Fire District for eight and a half years and on the Bullhead Elementary School District Board. I've been also on many other boards and commissions and since I've lived in the Bullhead area and I've always believed that you give back to your community that you live in and try to do the best job you can. I believe that probably we have eight, as you said, good quality candidates that have put their names in. You have a tough decision to make today and part of that decision is whether or not you want to put a short-term person in who doesn't have any aspirations of running again or you put someone in and some candidates are definitely going to run again during the next election. I'm one of those candidates that, as I told you before, that if you select me, I would be running again in the next election and if you don't select me, I'll probably be running again in the next election. But I think the decision you have to make is whether or not you need someone that can fill a position, that can hit the ground running, that knows most of the players and at least if they don't know the present player, knows the office that they need to go to and who they need to work on. There's some really important issues in District Five that need to be addressed and coming up here pretty quickly, regards to the road issues with the Department of Transportation. Obviously, the Board, we still have budget issues and we have funding issues with the Sheriff's Department. A lot of important issues that need to be worked on in this next year and a half. So the decision is, do you bring somebody in with no experience, who has a learning curve that takes time to really understand what they have to do, or do you bring somebody in that has some experience, who can hit the ground running and work with you to resolve some of those issues? And I believe I am the person that can do that for you and again, you have to make that decision. So I thank you again for giving me the opportunity to speak. I think that was pretty good timing. Thank you.
Very good. Senator Ron Gould.
See if I can get this high enough up to work for me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors and Staff. It's a pleasure to be here before you today and I'd like to help you cure your budget problem without a tax increase, without a tax increase. That's why I want to be a member of this Board. I believe that every dollar that we take out of the pockets of Mojave County taxpayers is one less dollar that they don't have to take care of themselves and their family. That's why this is important to me. I have unique experience that nobody else on this Board of Applicants has. I've served as a city councilman. I've served as a state senator. I have 35 years as a small business owner. I can do this job and I can hit the ground running. As I told you in the closed meeting, I told you that I would only serve as a placeholder until the next election if you appoint me. And I think frankly, since we met in closed meetings, that everybody that approaches this dais should state, either make the pledge not to run for reelection in the general election in '18 for this seat, or that they intend to leave that option open. Because I think that's important to you people and frankly, it's important to the public. The public needs to know what the basis for your decision was. So once again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here and to speak before you today and that I hope that you'll fully consider me when you make your decision. Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you. Another Senator, Senator Sue Donahue.
I'm not as tall as he is. Chairman Watson, members of the Board, staff, thank you for having me here today. I appreciate your consideration and I want to talk a little bit about my experience with the county. I have actually been a part of District Five since the county expanded the Supervisors to District Five. As a matter of fact, I've always lived in District Five. So I have that information going for me, excuse me, as well as the fact that I know the people of District Five. I've worked with people from all over the district with all kinds of problems. I have the experience necessary to begin working today. I am familiar with all of the county's policies, procedures, committees, and I've served on the Planning and Zoning Commission for several years. I have worked on county budgets and am familiar with the staffing. During my 13 years with Supervisor Johnson, I worked with all the departments. I know who to call to help with problems for the citizens. I have built relationships with the employees of those departments and that helps me to help the citizens of our county. My sole reason for applying for this position is to help Mojave County move forward. We have many issues that need to be addressed. I am aware of the financial condition of the county and I'm willing to work with staff to help resolve those problems. In December of 2016, this Board appointed me to the Senate and I thank you all for that. It was an experience of a lifetime. In the Senate, I kept in touch with county officials to best protect the county from pending legislation and worked with CSA on policies and issues. I have kept in contact with the Senators and staff and feel comfortable that I can help with Mojave County's legislative issues. I have been an active member of the Mojave County Republican Central Committee. As a matter of fact, I served on the Board with Chairman Watson as well as Supervisor Johnson. I believe that my life experiences qualify me for this job. I think we owe it to the people of District Five to appoint someone that is able to start work immediately. And I've been challenged by Senator Gould to say whether I would run again or not and right now, my feeling is, I will not. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Clerk of the Board, could I confer with you for just one moment? Want to make sure I have the complete list, so if you'll make that complete list. Sorry for the inconvenience. Rich Templeton, would you please come down? And good morning.
Good morning and thank you, Chairman Watson and the rest of you Supervisors and staff, for the opportunity to be here this morning. I really appreciate it. You've read and heard a lot, I'm sure, over the course of the past month about all of the candidates. The only thing that I think I would add to what you already have heard or read is in respect to my 50-year banking career, the bulk of which that time was spent in analyzing not only risk, but also opportunities, not only for the banks that I've worked for in the past, but also for the business and commercial customers that we served. That involved looking in all the nooks and crannies and all those places where things hide to ferret out those things that can hurt or also ferret out those things that can reward. It is that capability that I would like to bring to the Board of Supervisors and to the people that reside in Mojave County. Having been challenged just a moment ago, I suspect whether I would run or whether I won't, as I've shared with you in the past, today, as I look you in the eyes, I cannot tell you whether I will or will not run next year for reelection. I can tell you with absolute certainty that I will not run for a position that begins in 2021. And with that, I thank you and Godspeed on your election this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. And while you're standing, if you'll let Lois Wakamoto out?
Chairman Watson?
Good morning.
Board of Supervisors, thank you for this opportunity. As a longtime resident of Mojave County, I am committed to the residents, to the community, and to Mojave County. I want to work with you, the Board of Supervisors, to make Mojave County a better place and deal with the problems that we have to face and make a difference. I'm willing to give you 100% of my time and attention to deal with these things and to serve the people of District Five and will not split my focus time by running for election. I will go or do anything that you need of me to make things better for Mojave County and be the voice of District Five. I want to be an asset as your next Supervisor. Thank you so much for your time and your energy.
And thank you, Ms. Wakamoto. Good morning.
Chairman Watson, Supervisors Johnson, Angus, Bishop, Clerk of the Board, County Administrator, and Counsel, thank you for allowing me these three minutes to make a personal statement. I would like to recognize that this vacancy was a huge loss to you as a Board. It was a huge loss to me as a constituent. As I told you all in my interview, I had not even considered this appointment until I was asked by Mr. Moss to consider it and then I did, thoughtfully, as I conveyed in my interview. I have no intention to run for this position. My intention is purely to maintain the integrity of this office with the experience that I've gained in this county for the last nine years, working to serve the constituents of Lake Havasu, as well as help people in campaigns, political campaigns, all over the county, the state, and some congressional campaigns of people in this very room that I worked on. I just wanted to add why I thought I was the best choice for this position. Anybody who knows me or has worked with me knows that I'm honest and I'm direct and I've never had a political agenda that's hidden. It's always out in the open and it's always to better our community and I really am not going to spend any more time trying to convince you because you all know what a difficult decision you have to make and I will respect whatever decision you make. But I did want to just take a moment to thank my wonderful husband, who has supported me for nine years, working here in this community, who came here today and I'm going to take him up on his offer and go on my first vacation after the vote is taken today because I've worked hard and I deserve it. So, good luck to all of you and I'll be praying for this county, all the people in it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we have next candidate Chaplin.
Good morning, Chairman Watson and Supervisors and staff. Thank you for allowing the candidates this time to speak. My name is Bill Chaplin. My address is 2009 Gold Dust Drive in Lake Havasu City. In my view, the two most meaningful questions that I was asked during the interview process were, what experience do you possess that would qualify you to be appointed to this Board? I stated that I believe the best reason I'm qualified for this position is that I'm very objective and it is my approach to give everyone a voice. I shared with this Board that throughout my adult life, I have been a registered Republican and very conservative in my fiscal views. I have also been self-employed my entire adult life and have created numerous jobs totaling tens of millions of dollars in revenue. I have been recognized and received awards for my work on both the state and national level. I have also been a trained certified mediator. Collectively, I believe these qualifications would satisfy the voting public in District Five. The second question I was asked is that Steve Moss was an effective Supervisor for this district and his supporters and what would I do to continue with the work he started? I responded that I was familiar with his position on the many pressing issues facing the county and that I agreed with him on 80 to 90% of the issues. I also acknowledged that Mr. Moss was a valued member of this Board and he too, as an attorney, is first and foremost objective in his decision-making. Obviously, I favor that same approach. Now, I was not asked, but I'd like to take just a moment to mention a few things about me that the public may be interested in knowing on a personal level. My wife and I have been married for 43 years. We have two accomplished, successful, college-educated sons and one granddaughter. We have a vested interest in this county and would like to see the very serious issues facing all the taxpayers in the county addressed in the most effective and meaningful way. I believe that the majority of the voting property owners in District Five and the rest of the county as a whole have made it abundantly clear that they do not want property tax increases, perhaps to a lesser degree, sales tax increases, or previously rejected candidates by the District Five or other county voters. Thank you all very much for the opportunity to be part of this process. It has been very enlightening for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chaplin. Ms. Gillette?
And good morning.
Good morning to you, Supervisor Watson, the rest of the Board of Supervisors and staff. I was not prepared to make a speech this morning. However, I did make a few notes as I was... However, I did make a few notes as I was sitting there. I do, by the way, my name is Lawanna, and I live at 2880 Swirl Drive in Lake Havasu City, which is District Five. I do believe that I'm qualified for this position. I have been a businesswoman most of my life, in business for myself. It was only the last 10 years of my life that I worked for a city and got a retirement, which was nice. But I have done a lot in the town of Lake Havasu and for the county. I've been a MCRCC, I have been a Mojave County precinct person since 2008, which was when I, I came here in 2003. I got involved in 2008. I would like to fill this position for the remainder of Mr. Moss's term. I am not interested in running in the 2018 election. I am a very fast learner, and I pick up on things very quickly. And I will spend the first part of my time, if I am chosen, learning everything there is to know about being a supervisor. I will diligently do that. I am an honest person. I do what I say I'm going to do, and I, by everyone I talk to, I do it fairly well. So, I want to thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity, and I wish you Godspeed with your decision today. Thank you.
And thank you. Well, as you've witnessed, we have a field of candidates that are just simply outstanding. I just want to thank again each of the candidates that have taken the time to fill out all the paperwork, do all the practice for their presentations, standing up in front of the podium and being nervous. With that, I would like to thank you very much, and let's give everybody a big round After we make our decision this morning, Judge Gertler will be giving the oath of office, and at that point, the recordation will then go to the recorder's office, and at that point, after the recordation is done, that person can take their seat at the deus and will then go to the call of the public. So, with that...
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson.
What is, if somebody is appointed today, obviously, somebody will be appointed today, it's up to them if they want to be sworn in by Judge Gertler or not, if they want to have their own ceremony somewhere. That's not part of the process. I would hate to force somebody into doing something that maybe they wanted to have their friends and family to be there. Just a personal note.
Certainly will ask their permission. So, with that, we'll continue with item number four, discussion possible action for the appointment of the District Five Supervisor to fill the vacancy for the office until the next regular general election. So, I'll start to my right.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to echo Chairman Watson, everyone who put in their resumes for this position. Every candidate brought something different and unique to the table, and it truly would have been an honor to serve with any one of you. For me personally, it came down to two things that I felt strongly about. First and foremost, I believe this person should be the most like Steve Moss in his or her beliefs and priorities, especially people that he recommended to me. Second, I believe the person we appoint should only fill out the term until the next election, which is in 2018. That would mean there would be an open seat, and the people of District Five can choose a person cleanly with no politically appointed incumbent. With those two issues being my top criteria, there are two candidates who meet that, and either one of them would do a great job, I am sure. But for me, again personally, the biggest issues this coming year are the ones we have to fight for at the state legislature. For that, there is nobody I want fighting beside me more than Nicole Cohen. She knows her way around the legislature, has relationships with the people we must work with. She's on the lake, in fact, she's the president of the Lake Havasu School Board. She's familiar with the way boards work. She's well-known for her intensive research on every issue. I don't say this lightly, I believe in one year Nicole would do more for the county than most people would do in four, and I include myself in that. And with that, I will make a motion to enthusiastically appoint Nicole Cohen to fill the seat vacated by Steve Moss until a winner is declared in the 2018 election.
We have a motion? Motion dies for lack of a second. To my left, Supervisor Bishop.
Thank you, Chairman Watson, and like Supervisor Angus said, I think I'd be honored to serve with any of these candidates, but I have to throw my support behind the one that I think would do the best job for District Five, and that, in my opinion, is Lois Wachamoto. So, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Lois Wachamoto to serve out the rest of this term until the next election.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, vote will be taken by roll call.
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Chairman Watson? And my vote is no, but it passes.
That's correct. Ms. Wachamoto, if you'll come to the deus. Would you like to be sworn in this morning by Judge Gertler? Okay, Judge Gertler, if you'll please.
Would it be better at the mic?
Can we turn this on? Ms. Wachamoto, Supervisor Wachamoto, look to the crowd and speak.
We just want the watching, the people viewing to be able to hear.
We'll give you, you need to hold it in your left hand, because you're going to need to raise your right hand. And being a constituent of District Five, it's a pleasure to be swearing in my supervisor.
Thank you.
Turn the microphone out so we can hear, because this is your affirmation to the public. If you're going to hold it to the office, you have to read. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I, Lois Wachamoto...
That I, Lois Wachamoto...
Will support the Constitution...
Will support the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the Constitution and laws...
And the Constitution and laws...
Of the State of Arizona...
Of the State of Arizona...
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
And allegiance to the same...
And allegiance to the same...
And defend them against...
And defend them against...
All enemies, foreign and domestic...
All enemies, foreign and domestic...
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
Impartially discharge the duties...
Impartially discharge the duties...
Of the Office of District Five Supervisor...
Of the Office of District Five Supervisor...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God...
So help me God.
If you'll just be patient, we have to wait for the paperwork to come before you can
We do call to the public and the presentation, and by then, hopefully, it'll be back.
Okay.
Because she just can't take any action until that comes out.
Right.
That should give us enough time, because there's quite a few.
Okay. All right, well, we'll remind our newly elected Supervisor Wachamoto that she can't take any action until the paperwork is hand-delivered back to the court. Clerk? So, we will proceed with the call to the public. Those wishing to address the Board at the call of the public regarding matters not on the Board agenda must fill out and submit to the Clerk of Board a request to speak form located in the back of the room prior to the meeting. Action taken as a result of the public comments will be limited to responding to criticism, referral to staff, or placing the matter on a future agenda. Comments are restricted to items not on the regular agenda, with the exception of the consent agenda, and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of the Board. First person that signed up this morning is Leanne Smith, Leanne Hoagland Smith.
Good morning, Leanne Hoagland Smith, 3981 South Centennial Road, Golden Valley. In your last August meeting, you were considering solutions for the budget shortfall. Some of those solutions included the closing of rural libraries. As a former public elected official, I really commend when our county administrators look to what is efficient, that being the right thing, that mean, I'm sorry, that being doing things right, and effective, that being doing the right thing. As you ponder this decision, I encourage you to look at the research. Illiteracy in this county is hellacious. Many people in this county are below the economic levels of the State of Arizona and the United States of America. We also have a changing population. The demographics are now skewing towards retired people, 65 and older. They are outpacing the general population, which is growing about 2.5%. They're growing closer to 20%. And finally, I really want you to look at the fatality rates on the highways. There was some discussion about the rural people can come to Kingman using highways, 68, using 40. And that is really kind of interesting, given right now Highway 68 is getting one fatality per quarter for the last 10 years. I don't think you really want to endanger the lives of young people, students, high school students, the elderly, whose reactions to driving sometimes aren't the best. We really want to look at the welfare of all of our citizens, not only economically, but well as self-improvement. The libraries serve a really good purpose for rural citizens, and you are their voice. They don't live in cities. They don't live in towns. You are their voice. You are their protectors for that self-improvement, for gaining knowledge, for improving the workforce. Please consider that as you ponder this decision. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Watson and Supervisor. My name's Wayne Holland, 4825 North Mormon Flat Road, Golden Valley. I would like to commend our new E-Race detective. I've had the opportunity to work with them a couple times out in the field, cleaning up some property of an area in the county, both in Kingman and in Golden Valley. And I think they're a great addition and change for the E-Race team there, and I think they're doing a wonderful job. I was still looking for something from you guys. The proposal got voted down last time, that Supervisor, Chairman Watson and Jean Bishop works hard getting done, and I appreciate your efforts on that. But I think we still need to have a task force of some sort to get together and enforce the laws that Supervisor Johnson says we have on the books, but they ain't doing no good on the books. We gotta supervise, we gotta get them out there and get them enforced. So, having good laws on the books is good, but they don't, they don't do nothing. You gotta have people, and we gotta have them out there in the field, and they gotta respond to people's complaints. In fact, we had one the other day. Somebody was spilling trash on the way down Estrella and down 68. A person called the Mojave County Sheriff, got referred to the State Patrol, and absolutely nothing happened. So, that's not what we like to see. So, that was an opportunity to enforce the law that we have on the books. Nobody responded. I mean, it's not like robbing the bank or anything, but still, no, where's the enforcement? So, I think we got a great team started out there, so, and I'd like to see that continue, and I appreciate their hard work, because they've been doing, doing a heck of a job from what I see, and I've been out there with them in the field. So, thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Royanne Ortiz. I live at 1550 Mona Vista Drive in Bullhead City. I am here because I went on the website, and you change that portal to get into the documents. And in some areas, I'm happy about it, because now on the agenda, I can click to get the backup documents. However, once I click and I get them, I can't print them. It makes me save them. So, I'm not happy about that. I'm also, for the meeting on August 21st, there's no video for that meeting. That's been a couple weeks, and I'd like to be able to watch that video. It means I had to leave early. I also would like an appointment with Mr. Hendricks, the county administrator. I have several issues, one of them being the lease for the BMX track that you voted on to approve, and also on some procurement issues that I've noticed with some contracts. I wonder if that would be possible? Okay. I tried to find your phone number on the website, and I don't even see your name. So, can I contact you after the meeting? Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Kathleen Mishler.
Good morning, Kathleen Mishler, 5485 Northern Laguna, Golden Valley, Arizona. Thank you for letting me speak today, it's totally from emotion and heart. I'm here to talk about a woman named Jerry that lives in Golden Valley and has a little donkey. And I guess her property was zoned commercial, so now planning and zoning is enforcing their, their laws to have her get rid of this donkey, and it's been there for 20 years. She's lost her husband, she's lost her son, and she really doesn't want to lose her donkey. Eventually, this is going to come before the board, and I just hope you guys all kind of feel with your heart, because we really care about her and the donkey. His name is Levi. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Judy Hansen.
Good morning Chairman Watson and Supervisors. I'm Judy Hansen, I live at 3717 Neptune Road in Golden Valley. And I also want to speak about Levi, the donkey. I don't think you guys even know about this issue, it's just come to light. She has Levi in a Correl on her property in front of her house on Highway 68. He's been, Levi's been there since 2007, there was a donkey before him also. There's a, he has a caretaker who lives on her property, he cleans, he feeds, he waters, disposes of all the waste. None of the businesses around there have complained about an odor. Jerry's house was built in 1971, before the, any zoning was initiated, and now all of a sudden someone said, a county person drove by, a zoning person drove by and saw Levi there, and it suddenly became an issue. So I just want to bring it to your attention, if it, when this does come before you, if you all could just, you know, think about it and refer it to zoning and, and chuck into grandfathering this property in. The property behind her is zoned agriculture residential already, so that's just what I, my wish is today. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Fenels. J.E.R.I., last name is Fenels, I believe, F.E.N.E.L.S. Okay. Carl Brunson.
Good morning. I want to thank you first for, it is an open session, and that you are still allowing people to come forward and speak. I have been in communities where that is not what they do. My name is Carl Brunson, and I come to speak about the roundabout.
Can we have your address, please? Can we have your address, please?
Pardon?
Your address.
I live at 1890 Colina, Bullhead City. Now, I've come forward on this because I'm a retired police officer. I spent more than, from the city of Flint, Flint, Michigan, yes, the bad water, but they do have other things except, like high crime rate and that type of thing. But more than 50 percent of my time as a patrol officer was spent in traffic enforcement in the patrol division, and as an accident investigator. This was brought to me, my attention, and I had to come out of retirement, which I did not think I'd ever do again, to speak about anything of traffic. But what you have here in front of you is a horrendous situation. Now, my personal comments, I reserve, and I just comment to you from the Texas Roundabout guideline studies, and their comments are, roundabouts are the soup of the day for traffic engineers right now, but they almost universally hated by drivers. Now, the questions that should be asked on this is, who wants this, and why do they want it? And I believe that you should look into that, and that's not my concern right at this moment, to speak about it. What we have here is, they want to talk about traffic flow, and they say, we're going to reduce your accidents. Now, does anyone here in this room believe that after installing one of these things, that you are not going to have an accident? Anyone? Does anyone believe that? From that, I would like to move that you will read, this is a study that was done in 1926, 2016, 2016, and it's the effects of roundabouts on accident rates and severity in Arizona. Does this mean I don't get to talk anymore?
Go ahead and finish your thought, sir.
Okay, by Rezo Solomon. And what's hurting about this, this is a 68-page document, and you will find on page 64 of this, under the following observations that were derived. Okay, the following observations that were derived is that for double-lane roundabouts, a large increase of 62 percent in the average rate of accidents per year, and a large increase of 55 percent in the average rate of accidents per million vehicles after roundabouts conversions were observed. Number five, for double-lane roundabouts, a large increase of 60 percent in the average rate of damages per year, and a large increase of 67 percent in the average rate of damages per million vehicles after roundabouts were installed. Now, since we all believe that there is possibly an accident.
I believe I've given you the latitude of an extra minute, sir.
Pardon?
I believe I've given you the latitude of a couple extra minutes. If you can follow through with the next sentence, that's fine, but if not, let's stop.
You must address that after you have this, you do have an accident, what do you have? And what you have is, there is, your response, number one, how are you going to handle it? How is the officer going to handle it? Who is going to respond to this thing? What, who is out there to respond to this, and do they have the manpower? And you're going to note that you do not have the manpower, and the situation at this particular double-lane roundabout at that intersection, that what you're going to do is, you're going to have an accident, and the mainstream artery for assistance for
Thank you very much for your comment, sir.
No longer available.
Chairman Watson, if I just, if I just may say one thing, there will be many public hearings about these roundabouts in Bullhead City and Fort Mojave throughout September and October, and I hope you come and share your, your experience and your information. Thank you.
Thank you. Eva Corbett.
Good morning Supervisors, Chairman, and I want to congratulate Lois on her appointment this morning. We're very proud of you. And I'm also here for the Sheriff's Department, Mojave County Sheriff's Department needs your support. We need to find the money to pay the sheriffs, so they can hire more sheriffs, so we can protect our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you Ms. Corbett. James Mack, Mr. Mack.
Yes, good morning, my name is James Mack, Board of Supervisors, glad to be here. My-
Your address, please, sir.
Address is 10688 North Hamez Road in Mountain Vista Ranches, which is just off of California Road. Okay, my, the issue that I'm looking at is that I had talked to Les Henley since this last rain that we had, and California Road has been, being washed out over the last eight years, since Mojave County has changed the flow of water on the northeast corner of Valley Vista. And every time we try to fix this road, it, it costs me at least a thousand dollars and then some, so that we can drive on it again. There is not only the road, but there is a lot of other personal, people's property that is being washed out, and the county is not taking care of that. And there's also fences all the way down California Road, where the fence posts are just dangling in the air, and fences getting ready to fall over because of all the water that was run down there. Also, the cattle guard, I had mentioned to Les Henley, that the cattle guard on, I can't think of the name of the road, that comes on to California Road, if I can think of it. Anyways, I had mentioned that, that was all plugged up with tumbleweeds and everything else, and what they did, they just took the dirt away from the one end, but they didn't clean it out. It's still full. And so what's going to happen, it just is going to wash out more road. And the other thing is, is that here, we've been washing this road out for the last eight, nine, 10 years. The road was there, was put there 17 years ago, when I had bought the property down there in Mountain Vista Ranches. And we've started that ranch 17 years ago, I put the road in there, and the road's been in really good shape until the county diverted the water from, out of Valley Vista, onto California Road. Now, just above Painted Rock, the county had accepted that little portion of California Road, because that was washed out there, but they didn't accept the rest of the road that was being washed out all the way down. Actually, you're not supposed to divert the water off of your property. If you do, then you are liable for that water and the damages that it's done from where it starts to the end, which is the end of California Road. Hence, against the law, to divert the water off your property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Steve Robinson.
Stephen Robinson, 3439 North Bowie Road in Golden Valley. A month ago, I made a comment during the flood control discussion about the lack of work being done, been done in Golden Valley in the flood control district. County Administrator Hendricks responded in an email, and I received a hard copy of that information from a friend of mine, and I then responded to it, and I sent it to Mr. Esplin to distribute to the board. Of the 10 projects Mr. Hendricks listed, four of the projects were county-wide projects, not exclusive to Golden Valley. One of them wasn't even in Golden Valley, it was Mojave Valley, and the other five were definitely in Golden Valley. But virtually every one of them were studies or aerial mapping. There has not been one construction project done in Golden Valley, not one bridge, not one culvert, except for maybe small 24-inch culverts on a few places. And I, his report dated back to 2009. Well, being obsessive as I am, I went back to 1997, and the only other thing that ever happened in those previous 10 years was the fact that there was going to be a meeting on August 10th of 1998, I think it was, where they were going to talk about the FEMA mapping and that issue. I just encourage you, you know, we've paid, between, in the last 20 years, Golden Valley taxpayers have paid between $8 and $10 million in flood control projects. While the studies are valuable and are important, I would encourage you to start looking at different projects. I can name three different projects right now that would be fantastic for the people. Oatman Highway, building a, you know, dikes and a bridge there on Oatman Highway would really be a great idea. Shinnarump Road, that road was supposed to have been built, completed in 2007, it dropped off the capital improvement road program in 2007. It never appeared again, and there's five miles of dirt road, which unfortunately, the road level has dropped due to flooding and blading, and so now it's like a big wash where all the road water piles up there, as you've seen the last few days. The other one, of course, would be along the north side of Agua Fria. I think your engineers could really design a great way to run, divert the water down to the twin washes, and that would save a whole lot of flooding from coming across from Sohigh, that comes right across there at Agua Fria. So there's three simple projects, and I would strongly encourage you, Golden Valley's been around a long time, they've, they've had lots of people, it's 20 percent of the population of the unincorporated part of the county now lives in Golden Valley. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that closes the call to the public, and next we have presentations from Coyote Project, presentation of three art murals from Mojave County's WIOA Youth Program. Mr. Wolf, would you care to entertain us here for a moment?
Yes, certainly. Good morning Chairman Watson, members of the board, my name is Dave Wolf, I'm the Mojave County Community Services Department Director, and I'd like to introduce at this time Mary Mendola, who's my workforce development supervisor, program supervisor, who will tell you all a little bit more about these wonderful murals.
Good morning, everyone. I have a short PowerPoint here, picture's worth a thousand words, so. So one of the things that the Coyote Program has been known for across the years is, has been the creation of art murals. We haven't done one for a few years, so we decided that would be one of our priority projects for this year. We partnered with the Art Hub downtown, they donated studio space for the youth to work. We contracted with the, one of their artisan residents, Henry Kunkel, and the art director, Jenny Stapleton, to supervise the project, formed a, a team to create these three murals that are based on the history of Mojave County. They were meant to be portable murals, so they're constructed very sturdily from plywood. The idea would be that they would travel around the county to be displayed in various venues. We did have a gala grand unveiling of the murals at the Art Hub on July 28th, which was well-attended. In fact, the mayor of the city of Kingman was seeing if she could have the murals to be displayed at City Hall, so that could be an option to consider. Thank you very much.
Thank you Ms. Mendola. Mr. Wolf, are they going to bring them down for viewing?
Chairman Watson, I want to say that I attended this, this art showing along with Mayor Gates, and it was very impressive, and the mayor did ask if maybe these murals could be displayed in the city council for, or the city building for a while. So I think once these young men come down and you see their artwork, you'll appreciate it as much as we did at that time. you'll appreciate it as much as we did at that time.
Well, I'm sure we can please the mayor after they're on display at Mojave County. Wow. That is pleasing. That is pleasing.
Yes.
That's even gotta put a smile on Supervisor Johnson's face. Got the London Bridge there. Would we all like to get up and maybe we'll get a picture? And, and then we'll turn them around for the, for the audience?
Can you guys turn these around so we can see the audience? Our cameras? Yeah, our camera's right there. So we need the murals facing this way, and then we can display it. People are watching on the live screen.
Come on, Buster.
I guess, from a different angle.
Can we get you to put Levi on that donkey?
They're really beautiful.
They really are.
Boy, what talent we have here in Mojave County. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Item 45, 5 through 41. The following items listed under the consent agenda will be considered as a group enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items. Unless a board member so requests, in that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and for separate discussion and action. Supervisor Johnson?
25, 26, 38.
25, 26, 38. Supervisor Bishop?
I have none.
Supervisor Angus?
None for me.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
None.
Thank you. And I have none. Chair would entertain a motion for Items 5 through 41 with the exception of 25, 26, and 38.
So made.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Onto item number 25. Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two reasons I pulled this. One, it has to do with roads, which I think we shouldn't be taking any more in until we get our HERF funds reestablished. The second part on this one is this is inside the Kingman Industrial Park. And I believe they sell that land and they have the money to continue to maintain these roads themselves. If that's why I pulled it off, I just don't support taking any more roads in until we get our HERF funding back up.
Thank you. Any further comments? I have a comment to make. Airport industrial park out there serves a huge number of jobs in Mojave County. I believe it's almost 1,800. The, the businesses in the airpark contribute over $7 million in taxes. Although this is not a requirement for Mojave County to, to take these roads into, into the system, it is a step in the good direction in showing good faith to those people that are located at the industrial park. And it also will be enhanced the ability for the industrial park to finish selling the last 160 acres of property there. I think it's very important that we take this into consideration. We currently serve about 2.4 miles there at the airpark. And I believe it's not only the right thing to do, but it's the right thing to do economically for economic development. That's my comment.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion that we approve item 25.
We have a motion?
Second it.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
Chairman Watson, if I may, just real quick, just so that we're clear on the record, Ms. Supervisor Wakamoto's oath has been recorded, and that was recorded prior to the vote on the consent agenda, correct?
Okay.
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
Thank you for that oversight of mine. There being no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Onto item number 26.
Mr. Chairman, thank you on this. This one, unlike the other one that sells land and has the money to fix their own roads, this one is from the public, but I still stand in opposition to adding any more roads onto the transportation of the county.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Bishop, I believe this is in your area.
Yes, it is, and thank you for acknowledging that. This road is, is not a connector road or, it's a, it's a residential road. So I don't have any problem referring this to the Transportation Commission, but I did want to point that out that this, this would probably be better served by a improvement district in the area. So I make a motion that we refer it to the Transportation Commission as stated in, in item 26.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Onto item number 38. Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if Mr. Hendricks can answer this or we need somebody from HR, but I just noticed that there's more sheriffs raises in this. And is that from the half million dollars we gave from compression last year? Is that where the money's coming from?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, I'm trying to find the specific item that you're referring to.
It's all the way at the bottom.
I don't know. Mr. Chairman, could I have Finance come down here? Possibly Corl could assist us on it.
Certainly. Ms. Lloyd?
Ms. Lloyd, my question is, these, these pay increases are from the compression that we gave half a million dollars for last year to the sheriff?
That's correct, Supervisor Johnson. That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, unless there's any other questions, I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Now, we're on to public hearings. Item number 42. I'll open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2017-105. Amendment to Mojave County General Plan from a medium-density residential land use designation to medium-density residential and general commercial land use designation. And an amendment to the Desert Hills Area Plan from medium-density residential land use designation to medium-density land residential and general commercial land use designations for the Assessors Parcel Number 120-05-206 in the Lake Havasu City vicinity. That's south of Chinewith Drive, west of State Highway 95 in Mojave County, Arizona. Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. Do we have anyone here for item number 42? Yes, we do. Mr. Stans? Is that Erwin Stans?
Armin.
Armin?
Armin Stangat, 4321 South Cavalry Road, Fort Mojave. I may have made a mistake in your agenda, but I'm still waiting on answers on cleaning up my neighborhood on Cavalry Road. And there's been drug in, burned out vehicles, all sorts of garbage is still flying through the area. And I haven't heard from anybody. And that's going on for the past two months.
This isn't addressing the specific agenda item.
Pardon me?
This is not addressing the specific agenda item.
Right. If we could address your concerns either to the sheriff's office or the race department?
I did that already.
All right, then.
I called building department. I called code enforcement, and nothing has been done.
All right.
I have to look at dirty laundry out on my patio. I mean, I'm sorry that I made a mistake about the agenda.
That's not a problem, sir. Is Cavalry Road-
Cavalry Road is District 5.
District 5?
Yeah.
Okay, welcome to the world of reality. Ms. Wakamoto, that's your district?
The properties I'm talking about is the Masala compound.
Okay. If you'll, if you'll meet with Supervisor Wakamoto after the meeting?
I appreciate it.
Maybe we can help direct her and solve your problem.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
That one threw me for a loop. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to item number 42? No one wishing to speak to item number 42? I'll close the public hearing for item 42 and entertain a motion for action.
Motion to approve item 42?
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number 43. Open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action, adoption of the Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2017-106 for a rezone of Assessors Parcel Number 120-05-206 from commercial recreation 36-acre minimum to single-family residence and commercial highway zones to allow for a proposed subdivision in the Lake Havasu vicinity south of Chinewith and west of Highway 95 in Mojave County, Arizona. The commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. I have no one signed up for item number 43. Does anyone wish to speak to item number 43? There being none, the chair would be open for motion.
Motion to approve item 43?
We have a motion for approval?
And I will second it.
And a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Onto item number 44. Open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board Supervisors Resolution 2017-107 for rezone of Assessors Parcel Number 305-06-140 from agricultural residential to commercial manufacturing open lot storage zone to allow for an open, enclosed, and enclosed boat and auto and RV storage in the Golden Valley vicinity between Kirkland Road and South State Highway 68. Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. Anyone wishing to speak to item number 44? There's no one signed up. I'll repeat, anyone wishing to speak to item number 44? There being none, I'll close the public hearing.
Chairman Watson, I'll make a motion that we approve item 44 as written.
We have a motion for approval?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number 45. Open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board Supervisors Resolution 2017-108 for the denial of a rezone of the Assessors Parcel Number 324-10326A from single-family residential 20,000-square-foot minimum lot size to agricultural residential zone to allow for horses and, and property in the Mojave County vicinity southeast corner of Adam Street and Sierra Vista Avenue, Mojave County, Arizona. The commission recommended denial by a vote of 6 to 1. Commissioner Kelly voted against the motion. We have several people that would like to speak to item number 45. First being Elizabeth Forrester. Good morning. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Elizabeth Forrester, and my address is 3505 Eastern. And I'm speaking on behalf of, behalf of my cousin. And the property is always clean, the horses are well-kept. And I, I always take my daughter over riding the horses. We've never had a problem with the horses, so. I just want you to, you know, help her to have the horse, the property rezoned for horses for her. So that's why I'm here up for, on behalf of them.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Plank? Please state your name and address for the record.
Brian Plank, 4475 North Willa Road. I'm here on behalf of their horses because their horses are very clean, the yard's never dirty. I live in the area. A lot of the area is horse property. It's just that certain section, for some reason, was not approved zoned for horses. So the house behind it is horse property. A lot of the areas around are horse property. So we're just hoping that we can get their area approved so they don't have to relocate their horses. Like I said, their houses, their horses are well taken care of. Thank you.
And thank you. Austin Corl?
It's Austin Kiros, 44, 45, North Rosenvalle Road. Yeah, I was just speaking on behalf of my friend. That, um, horses are clean, the street and everything's clean right there. The house, you know, should have his horses.
Thank you. Lauren Oben? Please state your name and address for the record.
Lauren Quinn. I live at 2420 East Sierra Vista with my husband, Albert Quinn. When we looked at this home, and we bought it in, in January of this year, the MLS states in the first sentence, "Beautiful corner lot home on horse property." Both the listing and the buying agents never questioned it because from Stockton Hill down to Bank and from Gordon to Northern, there are lives- down to Bank and from Gordon to Northern, there are livestock. Standing from our back porch, you can see multiple horses, which is only one lot away. Down Adams, towards Northern, there are a few more properties with horses. You drive down any of these streets in that area, and you will see horses, goats, sheeps, donkeys, and fowl. Even Irving, Roosevelt, and Benton, they have goats and sheep, which is zoned R1. Eighteen blocks in our area is zoned AR. Twelve blocks are zoned R1. Sixty percent of that area is AR. I know how important it is to keep horse property clean in the middle of town. Stalls and water is cleaned daily, proper disposal of manure, safe fencing for the animals, vet care, shots, worming, trims and shoes, feed, and so on. We take exceptional care for our three horses. We don't want to run a working ranch with 50 cows. Anyone who has ever owned large livestock knows that you cannot properly care for that many animals on one acre. Hay alone is about $13 to $15 a bale. That's roughly $200 to $300 a month, not including the special feed my old mare needs to stay healthy and the special feed that the other two younger mares need. They also get fed a special feed that helps control the flies, which costs about $70 a month. Some people have stated that flies will become more of an issue because of the horses. We say it's not true. If the people surrounding our area would take care of their trash and their weeds as much as we do, they would not have as many flies. Sanitation and pest control is a big role in the fly sanitation. My husband was a licensed termite inspector and pest control technician for over a decade in California, working with some of the best companies in LA County. Our property is treated inside and out. Our property is treated inside and out every few months and for unexpected pests. We're not asking for something that's not already in the area, to be honest. Thank you.
My name is Jason Flores. I live at 4225 North Irving Street. My property actually, our fences touch, okay? I actually have seen their horses being cleaned up after. I actually helped them take the manure and put it in my garden. There has never been a pest problem, there's never been any issue. In fact, the property on the north of me, the property on the west of me, all three adjacent properties to us are all empty, full of weeds and have not been maintained. We are the only two people on that Sierra Vista and North Irving corner that actually keep our properties clean. I would really like to see them have an AR property. It would definitely do the neighborhood some benefit, and some people can actually move in there and change the zoning as a complete community and help each other out. It's a beautiful area. And I would really appreciate if you guys would consider them keeping their horses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Cornwall, 4290 Irving. They will give care of their horses, and I hope that you guys let them have their rezon the AR, for sure. Flies aren't a problem, nothing, so. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak to item number 45?
Royanne Ortiz, 1550 Mona Vista Drive, Bullhead City. I would like to, based on the facts that have been coming forth, I don't know why you wouldn't do it. You seem to approve all the other rezoning, so unless there's a compelling reason not to approve their application for rezoning, I can't see it. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have the realty folks wanting to make a few comments and clarify a couple of issues.
Yes, sir, we would, and we would like to hand you something if we may.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Oh, Lori Chambers, 3131 Lawrence Way in Kingman, Arizona.
Yeah, and Tasha.
Tasha O'Neil, 1655 Sierra Vista, Kingman, Arizona. What we're handing out, yeah, maybe hand these to you? What we're showing you, and I guess I can, if I place it here, you can see it too, is pictures of the actual property. So, well, that's not really going to help you a lot, is it? I don't know how to best to set it here. The property is actually neat and clean, like everyone stated. And what I've given you there is a complete package of every letter that was sent, because supposedly there was five letters against, but if you actually read them, they're not really against. There's a lot of confusion in the area about what this zoning should be. So some background on how it started. Tasha's a listing agent, she said it was horse property. Why did she say that? She lives just down the street, she believed it to be horse property. During the inspection period, I stood in the garage with the buyer and the seller, and the seller says, oh yes, this is horse property, you can have horses here. You don't question something you believe to be true. If it walks like a duck, acts like a duck, we all think it's horse property, right? That's how we're in this situation, just so you understand. Bad things can happen to good people. So now we're here. So those letters opposing, a lot of them, if you read them, they say they can have three horses. Where are they asking for this rezone? Because everyone believes you can have them there, but you can't without this zoning that everyone believed they could already have. So even if you read the letters that are opposing, they're not really opposing, they believe they could already have horses, because that is the common use and everyone does. And some of the references you've heard, even on the half-acre properties there, people have goats and pigs and stuff, but we're not wanting to call out addresses, that's not what we're here for. So if you see the, I also have an email from the assessor's office from Joe, when we asked him, my God, can you look into this? What is going on here? And I made copies of that, too, if you want to hand them to him. And it says that county zoning said that block was zoned to allow horses when they were one acre parcels. When they were rezoned as half-acre parcels, the zoning was changed. Now that parcel is acre again, he says, I don't know what that means for these people. So back in 1994, when they did this, they should have rezoned it then, but they didn't. So that's the email I'm referring to there from Joe in the assessor's office, when we asked him to kind of look into it, to figure out what happened and why it happened. And if you look at the specific neighbor that spoke against zoning, saying they could have three horses, even she believes, like I said, they could have it. They're not opposed to it, because when you look at where they're all located, they already have it. I'm not sure if that's the best map. Literally right across the street, this is the subject property here, okay? And this is Sierra Vista and Adams is the corner. So if you turned off Stockton Hill Road and you went, can Tasha take over?
No, that's okay.
Can I continue?
I've got a couple of questions.
Okay.
It appears to me that when the property went to half acres...
Right.
That's when you lost your right for horses.
That's when they lost the zoning.
When they reunited to one acres, which it is currently one acre.
Correct, 1.06.
Then what happened was, is the zoning didn't follow the change.
That is correct.
Okay, so it's really a technical error.
Yes, sir.
Because I've been out there a number of times, there are horses throughout that entire neighborhood. So the issue is a technical change.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, please. We'd like to correct what wasn't done correctly in 1994.
Okay, I think we got to the meat of the issue.
Okay, anything else we can answer?
Okay. From the D. A.? Question?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it also says, it says the rezon would be, would not be consistent with the surrounding zoning.
The rezon would not be consistent around the zoning, when you have horse properties?
With the surrounding zoning. That's from our planning and zoning. This was denied by our commission. And I understand these people wanted to change this stuff, because obviously they made a mistake when they sold the property, but, you know, we have a denial here. And it says opposition from surrounding property owners, and the rezon would not be consistent with the surrounding zoning. That's all.
Thank you.
May I state something? In the original, it wasn't denied six to one, I believe that's a typo or something of incorrect information, it was four to three from the commission of planning and zoning.
And that was because of the neighbor that complained, let's be honest. And they didn't, they didn't quite understand the zoning. She actually believed that you could have three, and the issue was with AR, you go to unlimited, and then that whole issue came up. And the planning and zoning staff recommends this change, and they say it does fit. And when the argument was, well, then should we go for a, you know, just a conditional zoning on this? And the staff said, no, this recommendation going to AR fits with the neighborhood. We wouldn't recommend spot zoning because this AR is appropriate for the neighborhood. That's the staff from the zoning department.
And we may have Mr. Walsh up here soon. Any questions from any of the other supervisors? All right, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Might want to stay close. Mr. Walsh? There's been a statement made that your staff was in favor of this rezon.
Chairman Watson, members of the board, staff in their recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that this be approved. That's correct.
It just follows logic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chairman Watson?
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? It's still a public hearing? Okay, at this point, I'll close the public hearing. Supervisor Bishop?
Chairman Watson, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this rezon.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the rezon. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay, on to item number 46. Open the public hearing and discussion for possible action for the adoption of Board of Resolutions 2017-109 establishing an approximately 2.0 mile section of East Brooks Boulevard, beginning at North Painted Rock Drive and ending at North Jimenez Road, located in Valley Vista area, as county highway. The Transportation Commission recommends to approve by unanimous vote. And we have a number of people wishing to speak to item number 46, first being Carlos
My name is Carlos Chella. I live on 6927 East Brooks Boulevard, and I wish if I can put this device, I don't know, I'm not too much about computers, but if, any place that I can put this.
Pardon me? Yeah, we'll need Nathan to come down to install that. Carlos?
Which device? Wonder which one? The Brooks Wash?
Okay, I'd like to present Brooks Boulevard, two hours after the storm, the last storm we have, the whole road, it got destroyed. And this is what we need the help for. We came to Mojave County with a dream to have a first winery in Kingman and to produce something really nice for people, a place for them to go, another place for them to go in Mojave County, to have a pleasant time with us, as along with Stetson Winery, which they have a beautiful place also. And people are really happy to do that, but only if they can get to it. We could not get out of our property for two weeks. If we had a medical emergency, we could not have done it without a helicopter. So I plead to you, please, take care of this road, take care of it and make it the Mojave Highway. We did much as we can, we did all our work to please the people in Kingman and Havasu, Mojave County in general. We have a lot of customers, like I say, and thank you for the opportunity to give me to have this winery in Mojave County. And this is for me to show the people how much we can do, and we're going to do a lot more. And I think this is an excellent time for you, the whole people there, right here, let me speak, to show the people over our county, how can you do it? How can you do something good for everybody, including myself? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chella.
I have questions, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Mr. Chella, we have a question. Supervisor Johnson?
If you recall, when this was brought forward to begin with, I asked why we were giving a variance and not having your company pave this road. And we went along, well, the other part of the board went along with that. And now, your business, which went down there, any business should take care of their own business interests, not come back to the taxpayers to support your business going in out there. I have a problem with the taxpayers paying for a road to go out there when that should have been part of your business.
Okay, if you don't want to consider my, the road, just because of my business, consider all the people that live there. And the Wash, and actually the Brooks Boulevard should be called Brooks Wash, because a lot of people that live there, not including myself, okay? If you're against my business, I don't care. A lot of people live on that road, they can't even get out of their house. Brooks got destroyed, Moon Shape got destroyed, California got destroyed. We pay taxes like everybody else, and all the other solutions we can see, and we can hold our taxes in an account, fix our road, and then you can take care of it, or take it out of our, you know, our taxes.
We don't tax you for roads, sir.
I'm sorry?
We don't tax you for roads.
Okay, but are you benefit, the county benefit for the taxes that we collect and every single customer that they come to our building? So I think you should have some consideration. When you guys ask for our help, when you guys get elected, okay, we did give you our help. We elect for you guys because you promise a lot of things, and a lot of things that are not done, done. So I, you know, I think this is a great opportunity for you guys to do something for your community, not just for me.
Well, when the roads are out there, when you put a business in, you obviously brought more traffic to the area. And Brooks Road, I mean, I'm not familiar, I don't live out there, I understand that people have, have problems with the road, obviously from the pictures you showed, they have a lot of problems, but there is also the ability to do an improvement district out there, like many people, other people in the community have. What I'm trying to say is, the election of the taxpayers of the county don't owe you a road to your business.
No, I don't say you owe me. It's your community, it's your people. You've been elected and that chair because of the people. And if you don't do nothing for the community, somebody should do it. So we, next election, we should think about who we elect.
They should think every election, sir.
Okay.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chella.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your Riverfront property.
Yes, my name is James Mack, 10688 North Hemez. I just live right around the corner from Carlos there, and it's not, Brooks Boulevard, I've been in the area there for 17 years. Anyway, Brooks Boulevard did have some problems, but it needs to be, more of it needs to be addressed. I see here that you are adding the rest of the road of Brooks Boulevard all the way to Hemez, which is very good, because right on the corner there is a Vietnam veteran that needs medical help, and he couldn't get out of his driveway, so we had to push a few hundred yards of sand off of the road down there so that he could get out. And his neighbor, Jim Anderson, was kind enough to cut his fence so that Clarence could get through there and get his medical help. The other thing is that it's not only Carlos's win- The other thing is that it's not only Carlos's winery, his business, it's also the Stetson Winery, which is right next door. They have a lot of people, they, they have an event center, which they have weddings and all kinds of other things going on there. And they, they need a decent road for these people to get there, because it's, it's really hurting their business. The other thing is, is that people can come down Morningside Drive and then hit Monte Vista, which runs onto California Road, which just goes right around the corner to Moonscape Way, which was cut in there five years ago and had not been washed out or anything, has been in really excellent shape. And a lot of people can take that route, which cuts off a mile. So the, the other thing is, is that when we had the washout on Brooks Boulevard, you had a lot of county trucks going over Moonscape Way, and they pretty well tore that road up. And it would really be appreciated if the county would, would regrade that road and fix that road up from, from the big trucks that pounded it. And that's, and there's a lot of people that live on Brooks Boulevard that lived there before Carlos and Stetson Winery was there. And they, you know, it's not only the two businesses that are there, but it's all the other people that live all the way up the street and around the corner. Thank you.
John Daniel.
Good morning, I'm John Daniel. I live at 6954 East Brooks Boulevard in Kingman. I'm the neighbor to the, both the wineries. And when we had this last storm, yeah, the flood was pretty bad. It washed about a foot and a half out of my, front of my driveway. I'm 66 years old, my wife is also, and we couldn't get out of our driveway. The only way is, I called the county and they said that, well, they couldn't do nothing, and their grader's on its way, and nobody ever showed up for like almost two weeks. So my wife and I had to take and dig out the sand on the other side of the road and fill it in so we could get our car out, which was a couple hours worth of, worth of work. It's kind of hard on my back and so forth, but that's just beside the point. I feel that they need to do something with, with the East Brooks. It's been, I've been there four years. We bought the property and asked when we bought it if it was a county maintained road, and they said, yes, it was, because I had lived in California, and we lived on a non-county maintained road. And I didn't want to get into this situation where, you know, driving my vehicles and so forth on a road that's not maintained. They said it was maintained, and I noticed in the first couple of years that the county was pretty prevalent about sending down the grader and grading the road off and so forth. The last couple of years, we have seen minimal repairs on the road. And these last two storms have generally washed out at least probably three to four foot of the roadbed that was in front of our areas and so forth. The county did come down and filled in the road and fixed it back up, so we're hoping that it will last. But to these people that are next to me, I've noticed in the last year or so that because of the maintenance of the road, business has gone down. I don't see as much going on at the event center and my neighbor next door, Carlos, Chella Wines. I've seen very few people going into his business compared to what it was when I first moved there. So I know it's rough for these people, I know they want to have a good business, pay taxes to the community. And I feel that the road is prevalent for these businesses to, to grow. Plus, I've heard other people have wanted to move into the area. Something about a bread and breakfast was talked about, nothing has occurred to that. And I don't know why a business would want to bother if they haven't got a road that's, that's maintained so that people could go and use their facilities. I feel it's very important that, you know, the county spend a little money to get a little more. You've got to spend money to get improvements and to get more money into your tax base. So all I can say is just, I'd hope you'd consider doing this, taking care of this road, either just maintaining it, blacktop if you can, that'd be really nice. And I thank you very much for your time.
Cheryl Lynn Roberts.
My name's Cheryl Lynn Roberts. I live at 6432 East Brooks Boulevard. And my husband and I bought our house four years ago, almost five years ago. And we never were told there was a road issue at all. It was supposed to be maintained. And all the time we've been there, we've never seen the county come down our road, past our house, or around the corner at all, not once. And you saw the water. We were not able to get out of our house, or out of our gate even, for practically a month. Our neighbor did cut his fence so we could get out, but we're both seniors on a fixed income, and we paid to get that road fixed so we could drive on it like normal. And you're entertaining making it a county, county highway, it says here. I'm in favor of that, but if you do that, does that mean that the county's going to maintain it? We're not asking for something that, I mean, if you buy a house, why shouldn't you be able to use your road? I mean, Mr. Johnson, if you had a flood going down your road, what would you do?
We formed an improvement district, and I paid for the road in front of my property.
Seriously?
It's prob, I'm not, for a person like you, when you come over, and you, where did you come from before you moved here?
Pardon?
Where were you at before? What state?
Georgia.
Georgia? I'm not sure what the laws are there, but we all think that the roads are, because it's a road in front of our property, that it's going to be maintained by the city or the county or somebody. And it's not, not true in Arizona, and some other states is the same way, too.
Yeah, but if...
But nobody tells you that when you move in, and now you find out you've got rocks and impassable roads and those sorts of things. But the problem comes down to money from the county. We get gasoline tax that comes back to the, to the county, the sales tax off that to maintain our roads. And those might have been swept year after year after year from the county, and we continue to add more roads on. And it's not, it's nothing personal against you or anything, but we added to the problem by putting businesses at the end of the street or on the street without forcing those people to pave the street like we should have, you know? But that's it, it has nothing to do with you. And I've, I'm sorry for, for the situation when you see that, that floodiness going on on your road. It's the same thing with, with the flood control issue, you know? We give away more and more of our flood control money, so.
Okay, so if it's a county highway, it can just be a dirt pile?
It, it can be, but it allows the county to, to spend money on it. If it's, if they, if the board passes today and takes it into the county highway, then county dollars can be put into that road. Not saying it will, but I'm saying it, it opens it up for...
You know, we're not asking for a lot. If, if they would run a grader down it even twice a year would be helpful. Just, you know, something. So...
And it, and it should be. If it's, I'm not sure if it was, was it tertiary before? Does anybody know, or where's the?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, the report says that it was a regularly maintained road since 2007.
So there should have been, there should have been, you know, maybe you didn't see them, I don't know.
Oh, no.
Graders going up and down your road.
No. If you would have seen the mountains of sand out there that run down from up above, you know, Painted Rock and down, you'd know that that has never been done.
Yeah, that'd be something you'd need to take up with the, with your district, ma'am. I don't know, I'm not familiar with it out there.
Well...
Ms. Roberts, I have a question for you.
Yes.
I was out in your neighborhood and went all the way down the road to...
Jimenez.
The crossroad, Jimenez.
Jimenez.
And it appears there is one hellacious problem down there, that's for sure. Has your home ever flooded?
Not inside. It's come up to within an inch of the front door. It's come into the garage all the way up to the work benches that are, you know, you go into the garage all the way up, and the water has come up quite, quite a bit, where we've, we had mud in there for, I don't know, it took us almost a year to get it out of there.
I'm, I'm sure. Because when I looked at your home, it looked like it was built at grade. That means they just laid the concrete on the dirt and built your house. Where, but that was built prior to when we adopted our standard building codes. So really, there's no one you can point and figure out to blame.
Right.
But just as a recommendation, you may want to figure out some way to protect your home against flooding, because...
Well, yeah. We're okay in the back. It's okay if it floods back there because it goes down and it can't come up into the house.
Well, this is really beside the point. I'm just making a recommendation to you.
Yeah.
I'm just concerned. It should have been built a foot up off, off the ground.
Yeah.
And you would have been protected. But evidently, they didn't have the foresight to do that. But back to the issue is the public hearing on, on Brooks. So, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to item number 46?
Chairman Watson, just so you know, I was out at the winery Sunday, and the road had been graded quite nicely and, and drainage ditches on both sides, and you could have drove a sports car out there yesterday, or Friday, Sunday, whenever us out there. But obviously, the flooding problem is real and concerning.
Yes, if you get further down the road?
Yes.
Yes, sir, can I help you?
Clarence Roberts, 6432 East Brooks Boulevard.
Yes, sir.
Cheryl Lynn's husband. Okay, when that thing flooded down there, we were locked in there for quite a while. I had to take and put $1,000 out of my pocket just so I could get out, okay? I understand what you were saying about the grade of the house. And we're in the process now of fixing that. Not diverting the water.
Right.
But diverting, just making it so it'll come down around the other way. That's not the point. The point is, that road is bad. It needs to be fixed. And when you say that since '07, it was maintained all the way down? Look at your records. It says that it's maintained down to Monay, and nothing gets done from Monay to Jimenez. I've watched the graders come down to Monay, turn around, go back. They've never touched that on my end.
Correct.
What is it? There's one, there's one house down there, so it doesn't matter?
No, sir, it just wasn't adopted.
Why not? One, one five acre stretch?
I wasn't here.
Why, I know you might not, you might not have been here, but I'd like to know the answer to it somehow.
Well, we're attempting to do that today.
Huh?
I say we're attempting to do that today.
What, get an answer to why it wasn't, that stretch wasn't adopted back in '07? That was the question I put to you.
I believe that the two miles goes to Jimenez. Is that correct, Supervisor?
Do what?
Mr. Lutowski? I'm asking a question to Mr. Lutowski. What we're, a question today, Mr. Lutowski. Brooks would go and traverse with Jimenez, correct?
Supervisor Watson and representatives of the board? Yes. The petition in front of us represents the section of Brooks Boulevard from Painted Rock to Jimenez. However, currently Mojave County maintains as part of its regular road maintenance program the 1.75 mile section from Painted Rock to Monay Drive.
To Monay.
So this petition would add 0.25 miles with regard to the county highway designation. As you know, of course, this does not automatically qualify that section for road maintenance, but as Supervisor Johnson pointed out, it would make the county position to expend funds at the direction of the board.
But if, if approved today, it would include Mr. Roberts' property?
Chairman Watson, I'm so sorry, sir. But Chairman Watson, yes, as if the gentleman's property is between the section of Monay and Jimenez, it would be included.
Right. That's 6432 East Brooks.
Right.
Thank you for the clarification.
So does that mean that when I see the graders come down, they won't turn around at Monay? They'll go all the way down to Jimenez and come back? If this gets approved?
If it's approved today, Mr. Roberts, they will go down all the way to Jimenez.
Sounds good. We'll see.
If it's approved.
That's what I said.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Anyone else wishing to speak to item number 46 before I close the public hearing? Hello, stranger.
Good morning. Shirley Ann Seany, 4395 North Skylark. Since the bed and breakfast was mentioned, I felt like maybe I should come up here, because we are the future innkeepers out there. My, my whole, I have a broader perspective on this, because when you go out there and you drive California, and you drive Brooks, and hopefully when you drive Huntington, you're going to have these well-used roads. And as we all know, the more pounded down it gets, the more runoff you're going to have. Because of the way it was platted out there when this whole development was, was first formed, these major roads run east-west, and that's the way the, the water goes, because that's, that's the elevation. And when you have these major roads that have been graded in, and the water runs east-west, you're going to continue to have this problem every year, the more you use those roads. It seems to me that perhaps, rather than, you know, obviously the roads need to be maintained, but if there was some sort of mitigation on the eastern end of this whole area, that perhaps water retention or some other solution to keeping the water, or maybe the most of it, from running down these, these roads might help the whole situation in the long run, rather than continuing to grade or even talk about paving, which will cause more runoff, as we know. If you look at the eastern edge of where this water originates from off the hills, perhaps some sort of mitigation could be done in that area as well. Thank you.
And thank you. Yes, we have one more speaker. Come on up, Joe.
I'm Joe Stetson. I live at 6899 East Brooks Boulevard, right in front of the river you just saw on Carlos's thing.
Speaking to the mic.
Oops.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to put a little bit of a different slant on this. We live out there. I couldn't get out of my driveway because the water, I couldn't drive my car through it. But that's, I'm going to put a different slant on what I'm going to say. I'm not prepared to speak, but I will say a couple of things. When Don and I moved here, it was our intent to open a winery, which we did do. We did not come here to build a subdivision of homes where you put in all the roads and all the infrastructure for that. We came here to open our winery. Before we came, I... Before we came, I did some research to find out where in northwestern Arizona, before we ever bought here, where in northwestern Arizona could you grow good wine grapes? Because you haven't seen a whole lot of poor wine-designated areas. Most of them are pretty profitable. And I could give you some examples, but I don't have time. So we spent our own money. We built our building and we planted our grapes. We did that on our own dime. And what we did do is we proved that the soil where we are in this particular area grows grapes that are good for wine. So basically, what we have done, we've come here and proved that we can have a good wine-growing, wine area like Temecula, like Walla Walla, Washington, and the stats on those are outstanding. But, and now we need help from the county because like Carlos said, if we don't get people down to our businesses, down to the wineries, it's going to die. And we're being a little bit short-sighted to not support a new industry that has come here so that we can have, bring, bring income, bring in tourists. We've had people from Switzerland. We've had people from Canada. We have had people from all over the world here come to our winery, our little piddly winery. But that's the way Temecula started. That's the way Walla Walla, Washington started. And that's about all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Stetson. Anyone else wishing to speak to item number 46? There being none, I'll close the public hearing for item number 46. And would entertain a motion for adoption.
Chairman Watson, if I might, I'd like to hear from Steve Lukowski and get a little more information from the county's standpoint and the understanding of the Transportation Commission, what occurred at that meeting to make them recommend approval. So if you could give us a summary of that.
Certainly. Chairman Watson, members of the board, the Transportation Commission did consider this item at their last meeting and did recommend that the section of Brooks Boulevard from Painted Rock to Jimenez, two miles, be established as a county highway by the Board of Supervisors on premise of economic development. Staff did represent certain facts as it related to the operational characteristics of the roadway as well as the extent of the general area that the roadway serves. Some time ago, approximately a year or two ago, the Board of Supervisors established Painted Rock through the Mountain Visas area as a county highway, and that was improved. Now, Painted Rock serves a broader area and functions more like a collector roadway, whereas Brooks Boulevard would serve more of a, you know, isolated corridor of adjoining properties and, of course, the two businesses cited. This petition was considered by the board in May 2015 and the board did at that time recommend denial to establish Brooks as a county highway. Staff collected traffic counts and we have represented that first back in 2015 when this was first contemplated. The average daily traffic on a weekend day was 101 vehicles per day. Whereas in July, this past July 2017, of course, when we get new petitions in, even if it's a second time, we go out and assess the roadway and size up the characteristics. We found 56 vehicles per day in the July weekends that we counted. The Board of Supervisors, back under Resolution 2000-50, adopted 12 criteria by which to review a county highway petition. In this instance, staff recognized three of the 12 criteria, so some of them, a minority of the criteria for whether this particular roadway really rises to a level of significance, regional significance, serving more of a collector or maybe an arterial function serving through traffic by which, you know, to justify considerations as a county highway. So with that, that was pretty much the extent of staff's assessment as well as the basis for the commission's recommendation being economic development.
Okay, and is it, is it my understanding that recently, this road has been improved by mixing different soils with the sandy consistency of the roadway? And can you go into that? Is that, is that working or is that still experimental?
Supervisor Bishop, excellent question. And what we saw and what we will continue to see on Brooks Boulevard is a native soil condition that is markedly different on the east end, which has really been pretty well-maintained and can be more resilient. The west end, however, is more of a sandy, sugary sand type of a, of a condition by which we have acted just recently after the recent storms and have brought in import material from a recent flood control, nearby flood control project and working the best available material, which is more coarse grain, to try to achieve a somewhat more of a resilient road surface on the west end. Our goal is to maintain Brooks Boulevard only to Monet at this time, the 1.75 miles, to a condition as accepted for, as when it was accepted for maintenance in 2007.
Okay, I did notice when I was out there, most of Brooks Boulevard was very, very nice. But at the west end, like you said, it, it's horrendous there. I mean, it's, it's almost where you need to put your vehicle into all-wheel drive to get through it. So I suspect that once this different material was mixed in, if that roadbed was built up a little bit, like the rest of Brooks Road, would that then be able to be maintained with regular maintenance and eliminate this problem? Or what is your recommendation there?
Supervisor Bishop, with regard to the recent work that we did, you know, time will tell whether we were somewhat successful. I suspect that it is definitely an improvement with regard to at least the, the surface that was improved with the import material. But, you know, this road, you know, would still, it's not necessarily engineered to, you know, convey especially very, very intense storms such as this. And, you know, this was quite a, more of a historic-type storm. But what we aimed to do was, you know, restore the road to a status quo-type condition, which crews really worked vigorously to do so. Under the section from Monet to Jimenez, kind of a similar situation. It's a difficult stretch by which certainly we would have to consider bringing in some import material to shore up the roadbed to be able to accept any improvement, whether that be a stabilization or otherwise.
Okay, and there were comments made today that the road has not been maintained. Is there any truth to that? I mean, it's on regular maintenance, so.
Supervisor Bishop, I believe the two parties that commented on that were residents that resided west of Monet, which is a section we do not maintain and are currently precluded to place any equipment on.
Okay, I understand that. All right. And then how many houses are on the stretch of road that we're looking at here today?
We estimate approximately 10 to 12 homes or so, properties overall.
And I'm assuming that includes the two wineries because they're?
Most of, I would suspect it may be exclusive of the wineries. But in general, a dozen or so properties that would stand the game.
You know, one of the speakers suggested maybe build in a retention basin to move some of that water to an area where it wouldn't be doing as much damage and turning the road into a river. Has that been considered with flood control monies or?
Supervisor Bishop, the whole of Mountain Visas as well as Valley Visas in general, you know, they were laid out in such a manner and platted to where modern subdivision development regulations and flood control regulations were not in place. So they weren't necessarily properly engineered to convey and pass, you know, flows that intersect any one area. I'd have to turn to my friends and colleagues in flood control whether there's any projects planned in the greater Mountain Visas area. There have been some specific site located improvements, notably some work with regard to a flood control facility in the California road area. But I'm not aware of any specific project in and around Brooks.
Okay, I just have a couple more questions. What would be the estimated cost to hard surface this section of road? Should, should the board approve it and that become a project that we wanted to take on?
Well, Supervisor Bishop, that may be, I may be not very well positioned to comment on that. I don't believe staff was requested when we prepared the engineer's report to present a cost estimate. And there are so many dynamics that factor into that, especially with regard to the state of the roadbed soils. And given what we've seen on that west end, I take it that some substantial excavation and probably bringing in of engineered fill, so to speak, to basically replace what we have out there, at least to a reasonable depth so that it can accept the hard surfacing would probably be necessary. So that would most likely elevate the, the cost of the improvement.
Okay, if, if that western section was paved or hard-surfaced, would the sand still flow down and cover the pavement and, and continue to be a problem like it is today?
Well, Supervisor Bishop, we would never, under a very intense storm, and I do recall this particular July event that happened, it would most likely rise above what we normally, you know, plan and construct for. But with regard to, you know, sediment deposits and the like, yes, under a very intense storm, we might still see some of that. And, you know, we continue to see, you know, sediment deposits, you know, routinely under storm events. But namely, if we can re-engineer the roadbed and provide for a surface that is very accepting of a weatherproofing soil stabilization, then by and large, we may likely be able to at least offer a road surface that can be resilient and would only need some, you know, minor maintenance as storms reset itself. But again, that's one specific section. That's the westernmost quarter mile of this entire petition. It would really behoove us to establish a continuous hard-surface connection to consider the entire duration out to Painted Rock, which would be the full two miles.
Okay, and then just for, for the adavication of those watching on video and those in the audience that live in the neighborhood, can you explain how a improvement district is formed whereby the citizens that live on Brooks Road could, could pay for the improvement themselves and, and how that would be collected from them annually?
Yes, and I'll try to keep this as brief as I can, Supervisor Bishop. With regard to an improvement district, improvement district is, there's two stages. One, forming the improvement district, which requires identification of all, you know, potential parcels by which would participate in the district and obtaining 51% of the, the ownership throughout that district. But most importantly, with regard to the road improvement itself, the process by which is carried out is the county, if this is a county improvement district, would in fact carry out the, the design and the construction of roadway improvements. And the assessment would be levied on the basis of the frontage by which each property abutting the road to be improved, in this case, Brooks Boulevard, would carry their proportionate share of that improvement. They have an option upfront to pay for their aggregate share all at once or carry that share as part of a bonding process over 10 years and pay through an assessment on their property taxes that share over the course of 10 years, which is a, you know, figure that is pretty bond interest. I should also point out, under the improvement district route, there is a opportunity for the residents to form a private road maintenance district, which would enable them, under kind of a similar circumstance, to spread the cost of maintenance activities that their own board, their own private board would establish, spread those costs across the property owners within the business, within the district. We've seen that, some successful examples around the other outskirts of Kingman.
Okay, so simplified even more, and you did simplify it quite a bit. But the people that live on Brooks Road could pave that road. The county would pave to have it paved. And then we would assess each property owner, the amount of frontage that that road is going through their property. And they would pay that annually on their, on their property taxes for a period of time, say 10 years.
That's correct. 10 years is the maximum, Supervisor Bishop.
And any property owner in Mojave County can do that. If they want to form a district for their neighborhood, whether it be one street or 10 or 20 streets, they can form that district and, and pay for that road themselves with an assessment.
That's correct, Supervisor Bishop. And as far as forming the district itself, it can be broader than the actual street that's being targeted for improvement. And that would just enable the district to order additional improvements as time goes by. It doesn't have to be all the improvements at once. So we've seen it work in many different ways.
Okay, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, well, this happens to be in my district. I'm very concerned about a couple of items, Ms. Lutowski. I was on the very westerly portion of, of Brooks the other day and down near the intersection of Jimenez and Brooks. It appears to me that that is one heck of a big wash area. And very close, it's got to be extremely close to, to a priority flood issue. So I've got a great deal of concern there. I've got a great deal of concern for the homeowners there. So I tried to indicate to them that they built on the plain there and not above. So I have a great deal of concern for that. Hopefully, if we could adopt this today and cure that, I would really look forward to that solution. So with that, I'll make a motion for the adoption of Board of Resolution Number 2017-109.
May I make a quick comment?
Certainly.
Just so that we could be very clear on this motion. Obviously, the, the board can vote to deny the petition to accept a county highway. But if you do declare this particular area a county highway, that doesn't mean that anything at all will occur on this roadway. So generally, when we look at a roadway and look at some particular action, the motion would say, accept the petition for county highway for the purpose of maintaining the road from Painted Rock to Jimenez. Or it could say, for the purpose of including it on our capital improvement project, if it was the intent of the board to rebuild the roadway and to hard-surface the roadway. So if it was, if the intent is to maintain it to Jimenez, then the motion for accepting the county highway should say, for the purpose of. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I believe I was in the middle. Of the motion. Okay. For the approval of item number 46, Brooks, East Brooks Boulevard to Jimenez for regular, for regular maintenance under the county highway system. Now, will that, will be correct? Regular maintenance within the county highway system. And that's my motion. Is that clear enough? Very good. Thank you.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Supervisor Johnson?
I need clarification. So this is, this is for regular maintenance and not for pavement, hard surfacing?
It could, it could include that eventually, is my understanding.
Mr. Chairman, that would have to be a separate action by the board or it could be considered by the Transportation Commission and brought back forward to the board when they look at their capital improvement program. But this, the way that you slated the motion was, I believe, to declare this road a county highway for the purpose of. a county highway for the purpose of establishing it as reg, including it in our regular maintenance system from Painted Rock to Jimenez.
So we could clean up that western end, if, if we so desired.
That's what this motion would do.
Okay. Then I would be in support.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Under the regular agenda, I'm bringing back item number 47 and 48. I'll give you a little bit of background why I've done that. When I was in the area of Littlefield Scenic, I stopped and visited with the, the people that had been against the project. I stopped and visited with the people that are proposing the project. I believe that we've come to a situation in which everybody's acceptable for putting the project in, so that's the reason why I brought it back, instead of furthering on to planning and zoning. So with that, I'm bringing back 47A, and I believe that we would need a motion...
Do you reconsider?
For reconsider. Need a motion first to reconsider item number 47.
Chairman Watson, I'll make that motion to reconsider item number 47A.
We have a motion.
I'm, I'm sorry, can you clarify? Because this item is 47A. You're reconsidering item 35 from the board's August 7th meeting.
Okay, let me rephrase that. I'll make a motion to reconsider item number 35 from the August 7th meeting. Correct? Okay.
I'll second.
And a second. Questions? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. And then the second portion of this on 47 would be to approve the amendment to the general plan. And having been there, having looked at it, having kicked the rocks, I agree. So with that, motion to approve. And I'll make that motion, motion to approve.
I'll second it then.
We have a motion and a second.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson.
You said that they came together, what was the, what was the discussion, I guess? What is, how did they come together on this?
Actually, when I talked to the residents there, their concern was the separation of the commercial property and the residential property. The applicant has indicated that he's more than willing to put up a six-foot masonry wall separating the commercial and the residential, and that essentially resolved the issue.
Is that part of the...
That's part of 48.
Okay, so will we get into that in 48?
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Now on to 48. That's the discussion, possible action for the reconsideration of item number 36 of the board's agenda, August 7, 2717, adoption. Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2017-094, rezone of a special parcel number 132 from agricultural residential to a commercial, highway commercial, to allow for an RV park in the Beaver Dam vicinity, Arizona, north of Interstate 15 and east of Anderson Lane. And this is the other portion of the item that I bring back to you. So with that, we would need a motion for reconsideration first.
Chairman Watson, motion to reconsider item number 36 from the board's August 7th meeting.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, second for reconsideration. Questions? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Now we get into item number 48B, and that's the discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2017-094 for the rezone of a special parcel number 40233132 from agricultural residential zone to a CH, 2H, highway commercial zone to allow for an RV park in the Beaver Dam vicinity on the Arizona Strip, north of Interstate 15, east of Anderson Lane. We do have the applicant in the audience, if he would care to speak.
Chairman Johnson, Monty Home. I live in St. George, Utah, own this land and have for about, and land around it for about 20 years, 19-plus years. And so we're grateful that you came up. Thank you for coming and meeting with us there in our building, and, and I would just state that our, we have the support of the school district, the support of the fire department, the support of the water company. The local water company has struggled at a $4,000 a month loss for about 18 years, and that water company, its only option is to grow its way out, and yet, there's been no development there, none, in all the years that we've been there. And so our hope is to be able to develop. And we have begun a little gas station. My partner's here with me on the gas station that has begun, and is being, it's, it's been approved for zoning, I believe, but it's, it's not necessarily fully approved through planning and zoning, the actual gas station. But we are beginning some development there. Our goal is to put an RV park in. Our, our hope is to get this zoned general commercial, and if, if the numbers don't work out for RV park, we certainly want to do housing of some kind there or something. But our goal right now is an RV park. So we appreciate your consideration. And we have agreed that we would put a masonry wall, and I believe everybody, it's our belief that everybody there is in approval now and okay with it, based on that.
Thank you, Mr. Home. Questions for Mr. Home?
Would you like us to build you a road or anything?
Please. We'd like you to pave everything for us, without a special improvement district. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Home. Motion to approve the contingent upon the applicant agreeing to constructing a six-foot-high view obstructing masonry wall to serve as a buffer between residential area and commercial.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Motion carried.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Adjourn. Thank you.